Hold order, our regular city council meeting for March twenty fifth, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you, welcome everyone, roll call.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
Present.
Councilmember Overhauser.
Present.
Councilmember Bartels.
Present.
Councilmember Belloc.
Present.
Councilmember Nazaro. Councilmember LeBar.
Present.
Councilmember Postuma.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt is not present.
And I do have a request to excuse Councilmember Schmidt from this evening's meeting, so moved.
Second.
Motion to second to excuse Councilmember Schmidt, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, citizen comments, this is an opportunity for the public to provide comments to our city council, for those that wish to speak. I don't think anybody signed up, is that correct, okay, please state your name and your address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, anybody out there wish to comment? Sorry, paper alert.
Yep.
How about anybody that's joining us virtually? Hey, I'm gonna offer it out, anybody in the crowd? Anybody joining us virtually? Okay, I'm gonna move on to the minutes from our March eleventh meeting, you had an opportunity to review those minutes, I'd accept the motion to approve them unless there's corrections.
So moved.
Second.
Think I have a motion and a second to approve our March eleventh regular city council meeting minutes, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, our minutes are approved, vouchers for just twenty twenty five.
Finally, just twenty twenty five, we have expenditures of one million one hundred fifty six thousand two hundred sixty five dollars and sixty nine cents. That is made up, I believe expenditures of one, I think I had that wrong, no, my bad, I'm sorry, plus additional payables, they were some manuals we had to issue for two hundred ninety seven thousand five hundred seventy seven dollars and fifty four cents for a total of one million four hundred fifty three thousand eight hundred forty three dollars and twenty three cents.
Your honor, the finance committee reviewed these items, I would move approval.
Second, thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve the vouchers as presented, all in favor say aye.
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 Close name, thank you Cindy, vouchers are approved, there were a couple of claims for damages, and this one, the first one is the Grove.
Yes, did everyone have a chance to review them, cool, well, finance committee discussed these and reviewed them with council even tonight, and I would recommend that we do not pay either of them.
Okay. Any other questions on that, have a second?
Yeah, second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to deny both claims that were presented, one from Amanda Willis and the other one from the Grove Chenee, any questions or comments?
Sorry, Theresa, you said, you reviewed what Mike was saying.
Yes.
Cool.
Pardon, cool, okay, I'm sorry, I gotta turn my.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny both claims for damages, all in favor say aye.
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 Close name. Thank you, moving on, small contracts, you can see the small contract that I signed for the recycling center, there are some gutters there, so we prepare that quickly. We don't have any information items or appointments, but we do have some resolutions, and the first one, like to bring Cindy and Craig up, this is resolution F three forty two, the adoption of commute trip production plan. Yes, Craig, welcome Craig.
She doesn't want to do anything, but I don't blame her, good evening mayor and council members, if you don't know, I'm Craig Wall, your accounting manager and your E T C, which is your employee transportation coordinator. I'm the one that sends you all the emails and you see the posters, don't feel harassed, before you know it, you have the resolution F three forty two, hopefully we can adopt it, it's for the next four years, we do it every four years, I have to confess, I'm not the author, that actually goes to, it was a collaboration between Brett Lucas, the former city planner, S R T C, the county, Leanne. I kind of contribute a little bit, but, but I did not write it, it's actually pretty good, my role really is to market the plan to all city employees, that's why you see my emails. Essentially, the plan's the same as it has been in the past, but it's definitely more comprehensive, it has updated goals, it's kind of ties in more with the comp plan, that kind of thing, and it looks a lot better, so. And, and then with that, I'll, I'll bring, introduce Leanne Yamamoto, she's the T D M manager for Spokane County, so. I have a little presentation for you.
Nice.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, alright.
Welcome Leanne.
And thank you mayor and city council for having me here, I think we do have a PowerPoint, oh, I have to, okay, oh, I see, right here? Okay.
You have to go to Zoom, we just had to share it, so people online can see.
Thank you.
Oh, I got it approved.
While we're waiting, I want to thank Craig, thank you do all the heavy lifting for C T R for the city, which led to us being a silver champion last year, so thank you so much, appreciate all your efforts.
It's a thankless job.
Craig does do a great job though, and he's wonderful to work with, so.
Oh, is it, okay.
Are we twenty five, twenty six years in, Craig?
I remember just talking about it a couple of minutes ago.
We started at the same time, so we're going on twenty seven years, yeah.
That's dedication for sure.
Sharing the screen.
Right? Wonder if you made that smaller maybe?
There we go.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, alright, so we're, okay, thank you again for having me here, as Craig had mentioned, we worked on the commuter production plan for the city of Chenee, started back in March and finished it in September. So just here to tell you a little bit about that, and then tell you a little bit about our program as well, so all the affected jurisdictions are required to update their C T R plan, this one is for two thousand twenty five through two thousand twenty nine. And again, it's a collaborative effort with Spokane Transit, S R T C, Spokane County, which I'm in the Commute Smart Northwest Office, and then of course, City of Chenee, and then the other jurisdictions as well. Okay, so, oh, sorry. Okay, so just, I wanted to give you a little bit of overview for some of you that don't know as much about commuter production in Chenee, so the C T R law was passed in nineteen ninety one as part of the Clean Air Act. It's a statewide planning effort to reduce traffic congestion, air pollution, and fuel consumption. So who is affected by the C T R law, counties and urban growth areas are affected by the law, within those urban growth areas, employers with over a hundred employees who start their workday between six and nine A M. And then work at least thirty five hours a week are affected, applies to all public and private employers, and then also the local jurisdictions as well. So Spokane County has been the lead agency implementing the C T R law for the seven jurisdictions that are affected since nineteen ninety three, so you can see the list of all the jurisdictions that are affected, Chenee does have three employers in it, so we work with them and Craig to implement their programs. So we do have some impressive results, we just shared these at our Commute Smart Champion Awards event as well, but weekly, as a region for Spokane County, we remove nearly eight hundred and fifty thousand miles being driven on our roads. Every week, over seven hundred and eighty five thousand tons of greenhouse gas emissions are not emitted because keeping those cars off the road. So yearly, over forty four million miles not driven on the roads, which helps with the maintenance and the upkeep of our roads, and then over forty million tons of greenhouse gas emissions are not emitted with having those cars off the road as well, so pretty impressive. So again, we did work on the Chenee C T R plan for two thousand twenty five through two thousand twenty nine, it highlights the existing and future land use, transportation conditions and characteristics, a lot of what all of you are working on and, and how you improve your roads and transportation system. Highlights the benefits of C T R and how C T R can help the city, Spokane, sorry, there was a typo there, City of Chenee achieve the regional and state goals. Provides baseline data and performance targets as well, also outlines the services and the strategies to achieve those C T R targets, and our office helps implement those as well. Also outlines the financial plan and where we get our funding, and then we did do a summary, which is included in that plan as well, with some public outreach and some engagement with the communities as well. And again, we worked with Brett Lucas on this, on putting that together, so baseline and targets, the current regional baseline for a drive alone rate is sixty four point four percent collectively. And the state's target is sixty percent, so for Spokane County, it's a sixty percent target trying to get down to, so I've listed all the jurisdictions that are affected, it also shows their baseline surveys, reduction, what was recommended and improved through the state, and then also that target drive alone rate. So the city of Chenee actually does have a sixty point three percent drive alone rate, we did give a seven percent reduction, so bringing that drive alone down to a fifty six point one percent. Okay, again, the timeline, we started this back in March, working with all the collaborative partners, it was reviewed by S R T C, and then also approved, it got moved on to the state, the T D M Technical Committee from Washdod. Actually approved that at the beginning of January, and so now we're here to get your approval on that C T R plan. And then, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you Leanne, any questions for Leanne?
Just one real quick, based on your stats back there, what, were you saying that forty six percent of Chenee residents are carpooling, not riding alone, is that correct?
No, so collectively, I can go back to that, collectively in Spokane County, from all the employers that are affected, sixty four point four percent drive alone, so thirty six percent are using commute options.
So in Chenee.
And that's collectively.
You're talking about, your, your, this calculation is based on three employers?
Yes, it is.
It's the school district, it's the city, and it's E W, correct?
It's actually Trans Systems, I don't know why, but legally they are listed as a Chenee employer, the city or the school district is not affected, yeah, so I'm sorry, yes, City of Chenee, you guys do have a forty percent of people using commute options at those three employment sites, which is great.
Yeah, that's pretty good, I wasn't thinking it was that high, so that's great.
Eastern Washington University does a great job promoting their program and getting people on the bus, so, so that is great, which I hear you guys are gonna be getting a double decker bus too.
Exciting.
Great, thank you.
Thanks Mark, any other questions for Leanne? Thank you very much for your time, thanks for coming out to this great little town. So now, you've got, what for you, the resolution F three forty two plan for decision?
It's your pleasure.
Your honor, I make a motion that we approve F three forty two.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three forty two, the adoption of the C T R plan, all in favor say aye.
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 Close name, thank you Craig, resolution F three forty two passes, and thank you Leanne. Todd, you're up, resolution F three forty two, street scan service agreement.
Yeah, it's been probably about fifteen plus years since we've had a full street rating, and back then, we would actually walk the streets and do the physical rating ourselves on a piece of paper, put everything together, crunch it in an Excel spreadsheet, that time is gone. We're wanting to up the streets, know the conditions of the streets as we move forward, especially if we will be looking at extending the residential street tax in the near future, but we'd like to see where we're at with our streets. Street scan is a totally different process, they actually drive and, and you can probably see, like the Google Earth cars driving around, but they have lasers on their cars that shoot right down on the pavement, and they will line up, we will send them, set them our G I S database. And everywhere they go, we're kind of knowing right where they're at, we'll count how many cracks we have, how wide those cracks are, get an automatic rating of those streets. In addition, we want to take a look at the sidewalks, because it's been probably almost twenty, thirty years since we did our initial rating on the sidewalks, we've been pretty aggressive at trying to, you know, correct all the, all the bad condition sidewalks, so this is a good time to do that rating. In addition, while they're out on the sidewalks, we also are gonna take a look at the, pretty much the ramps, the A D A, because we are kind of required to submit a plan to D O T, so with all of that, that first year, that cost for that, providing all that service. And that rating's right around eighty seven thousand, and then when you take a look at what they have lined up for the future years, basically, it's the software program to allow us to do. Basically, if we have a set budget, we can put it in the program and they can recommend the best maintenance that we can, can provide, best bang for your buck, so to speak. And then when you take a look at year three, we plugged in initial rating, that has gone down because they have all the, everything in the system, they'll do the drive, they'll do a quick rating, so that's how that, that five years kind of flows out, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, they are, they picked up Liberty Lake, I believe Medical Lake in Ernie Heights. They'll be targeted for Ju- July to come in and actually do the scan, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Todd, any questions for Todd on getting our streets rated, been a long time.
We discussed this in general government, and I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three forty two, any question? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, four thirty forty, three forty four, this thing's working?
Any questions or comments?
I just would mention that we talked about it in Public Works as well, and asked a lot of questions about it, and agreed that it was worth, worth the money and need, and in additionally, like each year, we get more bang for our buck, and we get a lot of help with that, so that we felt like that was really great.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Close name, thank you Todd, resolution F three forty four passes. Chief Jenkins, resolution F three forty eight, the Omnia Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchasing Agreement.
Thank you, your honor, good evening council, these next two resolutions are somewhat intertwined, if, if memory serves, last year I brought before you all a resolution for a Department of Ecology grant to go out and to purchase some much needed hazmat equipment for the fire department, so we were awarded the grant, in the attempt to, to purchase the equipment that we were looking for, for the city fire department, we in turn looked at a particular company who sold that equipment. They pointed us to Omnia and asked if we were a member agency of Omnia, at which we are not, so Omnia, just like N J P A or Sourcewell, is competitively solicited national contractor consortium, if you will, that collects all these competitive national contracts, brings them into a pool, if you will, at Omnia. And then allows us to go out and procure equipment and assets, like the hazmat equipment that we're looking for, which is the next resolution. Diving a little deeper into Omnia, and after talking to Cindy Mark and Attorney Capon about it, that there are hundreds of contracts that Omnia has co-located together under this umbrella that would really benefit not just the fire department, but all departments within city government. Things like Lowe's, Home Depot, Amazon, are just some Granger, so those have already been solicited on a national basis through a competitive process. So with that, you know, I would request your permission and approval to go ahead and enter into with Omnia partners, it does meet the intent of the R C W, so we can, we can purchase the much needed hazmat equipment, and ha- happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks chief, any questions for chief?
We also talked about this public safety and thought it was a great idea, it gets, it gets us equipment at a cheaper rate as well, and that's what we looked at too, just saving money for the city was very helpful, so we liked the idea of saving money for the city, so. We were in agreement.
Was that a motion?
That's a motion to say yes to resolution F three forty eight.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three forty eight, any final questions, Jack, did you have something?
Oh no, I was just seconding it.
Okay, gotcha, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close name, thank you chief.
Okay, thank you for passage of that resolution, and then the next one, resolution. Your honor, there is a registration form that I will work out with Mark to figure out who that really needs to be on their website to fill out that registration form, I did include that in a resolution packet, but at some point, other than just signing the agreement, somebody's contact will have to go down here, and I'll leave that up to Cindy or Mark to decide who that needs to be, but. Since you passed resolution three forty eight, resolution three forty nine is now the company called Mallory, who has already entered into that national contract agreement with Omnia, Mallory going through them, utilizing the Omnia network is gonna save us about nine thousand dollars on that, on that hazmat equipment, so we were. So we were awarded pursuant to the passage of resolution F two six seven last year. We were awarded forty thousand dollars through State Department of Ecology. For much needed equipment and where you will be spending the majority of that through the company called Mallory for hazmat gas detectors. Bump testers that we have to bump test them every week to make sure they're calibrated and dialed in. It'll, it'll add a much needed layer of technology to the city fire department.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief? Comments?
I would move to approve F three forty nine.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second to approve resolution F three forty nine, the Mallory hazmat equipment purchase. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Thank you, Chief. Resolution F three forty nine passes. Okay, Todd, backup. Resolution F three fifty, this is the twenty twenty three community development block.
It's confusing, but this is all this is an extension of, of the original agreement because we did the project. CDBG holds five percent as contingency. It took a little while to get all the contract documents. Pretty much back to us. And then we would like to, to basically bill CDBG or have a refund, just over thirteen thousand. But we were out of the timeline. So this is just renewing that, that agreement until June thirty of the twenty twenty five. We're ready to go ahead and increase these retainings, but it's just an extension of that agreement. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Todd, any questions for Todd on this? Get our money.
There are no questions, your honor. I would move for passage of resolution F three fifty.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second to approve resolution F three fifty, the amendment to the CDBG contract. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three fifty passes. Resolution F three fifty one is the Elm Street Overlay Phase Two Consultant Agreement.
We are calling Phase Two. As you recall, we're working on Phase One, which is Washington all the way down to Elm. We're approaching ninety percent design and hopefully to get out to a contract in April. To get that job done during the summer break of EW. But the Phase Two is, is basically picking up at North Six and running it all the way down to Second Street. TIB, we rewarded TIB funds of just short of one point three million. And what you have before you tonight is the design agreement with parametrics showing the scope. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on this? And it goes just a second, right? There's not a. It goes Washington all the way to Second, correct?
It will. Yeah, yeah. If we can get the project done early on, I know their scope of work, they were looking at, at probably being done in October. But if we were to bid it out, we may go out to bid in November, December, so we can get some good. Progress on that. Right now, our focus is on Elm Street and then also the traffic circle at North Six and Pet.
Perfect. Questions, comments for Todd?
There are no questions. I would move for passage of resolution F three fifty one.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second to pass resolution F three fifty one, the Elm Street Overlay Phase Two. Any comments or questions again? Once, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three fifty one passes. F three fifty two.
Moving right along.
Ground maintenance mower purchase.
As you recall, on the twenty twenty five budget, we approved two ground mowers. One for the street department and one for parks. We have the John Deere, they're a diesel, they're what they call a zero turning radius. We're recommending to purchase those through a Sourcewell contract. So before you tonight is looking at, at purchasing one for the street and one for the parks. Brass is on the way.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on this purchase?
If not, I would pass, I would move for passage of resolution F three fifty two.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second to pass resolution F three fifty two, the grounds maintenance mower purchases. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three fifty two passes. Resolution F three fifty three is the Well Five Roof Replacement Project. Well needed.
Yeah, it's well needed. It's, it's not, not well one, it should be Well Five is the actual, the middle building that's kind of sits across from the Spokane Fire District. That is our supply room. That's where we keep all of our pipes and, and all of our, our stuff. The roof is desperately leaking. So we went out and we received three quotes. Kirby Construction submitted the lowest quote and that includes not only a metal roof, but the OSP on top of that. And he came in right at eleven thousand five hundred and forty.
What's an OSP?
It's just the underlayment.
Quick question on that. I should have asked this earlier, but I did notice that that was a pretty, it seemed like a pretty competitive, lower price bid. It is. Well. There's not a lot of market. That's that just made me a little nervous. Have we, have we done?
We confirmed that he is an owner operator. In, in that. So there is a, there is a, when you, when you supply for L and I, I don't know if he's going to have any, any labor. So he's, he gave us the best quote. We did confirm that state prevailing wages and everything else.
And I noticed the two, I think it was like twenty five hundred and forty five hundred, but. That is going to, there, there will be prevailing wages. Yeah, out of curiosity, what was the next lowest bid?
Next lowest bid was right about fourteen thousand.
Okay, so there's not that much of a difference. All right. Fair enough. I just, again, wanted to make sure that they knew this was prevailing wage. Thank you.
I'll take the lower.
Anything else?
That was my question as well. So thanks, Ves.
How to do our due diligence, for sure.
There are no more questions, your honor. I would move for pass, passage of resolution F three fifty three.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second to pass resolution F three fifty three, the Well Five Roof Replacement Project. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three fifty three passes. Moving on, resolution F three fifty four, the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven Police Guild Contract. Mark.
Thank you. Okay. Last council meeting, I presented you the tentative agreement. There were some questions that came up on the, the financials. So I would like to present those to you tonight. But just as a reminder. Compensation, we're looking at a five percent increase in two thousand twenty five, a seven in two thousand twenty six, and a six in two thousand twenty seven. Which totals eighteen percent, not thirty six percent, as it was reported in the Cheney Free Press. They did call and say they would certainly correct everything. I know they've corrected the electronic version and will correct it in the print edition this week. So additionally, we have the new classification of corporal, which is a placeholder that we will probably use. Towards the end, end of this contract. The meat of this I want to talk about is this. So you had asked for, there we go. You had asked for, you know, just some more information, you know, on the, on the financial impacts. Again, one of the goals of the Guild was really to kind of increase their compensation for the specialty. That they are very well trained in. This requires a lot of time and extra effort on their part to get these certifications. Ultimately, these certs, I will say, make us a safer city. Whether it be the field training officers that are training our, our new staff. The qualified firearms instructors, armors, range masters. We are, all of our officers are required to qualify. And so their training out on the range is absolutely critical. Defensive tactics, taser, less lethal, impact munitions, EVOC. And then we added drone. Behavioral Health Unit, the PIO, which is the Information Officer for the Department. That puts out all the great updates that you see on their Facebook page and really keeps the community informed on matters involving the police department. And then we're also doing the traffic unit as that has been an emphasis under the previous chief. And, and our current acting chief is to make sure that we are enforcing all the traffic laws in town. As we've heard from the community that that's a priority of theirs to make sure our streets are safe. Longevity pay was another thing for them. And so we made some slight adjustments there. This is all about keeping the, the officers here that we've invested in over the years with all the training that we've put in. And just the cost of having to go out and recruit, put new officers back through the FTO program and all that. So maintaining our current staff is absolutely critical to keeping our community safe. So. Focusing on two thousand twenty five and two thousand twenty five budget, it was a five percent increase. Two thousand twenty four, our actual rate wages, Cindy was able to close the books. And so what we paid in base, plus their specialty and their retention, their education pay. That was a million, seven eighty two, one oh six. For two thousand twenty five budget, including all those same things, the budget was two thousand nineteen, eight hundred. Our projected wages with this contract, and this is where we dug into the details and looked at each individual officer, kind of where they were in the step progression of, of the range. Their base wage with these increases will come to about one million, eight hundred, eleven thousand, four forty eight. Specialty pay breakout, that would amount to about forty seven, seven, and then longevity pay. Slash education, because they get one or the other, that amounts to about fourteen, three oh two. I will say, as, as this dollar figure, there's some savings on the vacant positions as we've had a couple of. Officers that were top step actually left us and it's going to take us about a month ish to replace those folks. We already have two new officers lined up to start April first, so we'll have a little savings there. We also are bringing those folks in at lower than top step. So there's some, some savings there from what we've budgeted. We'll have a reduction in longevity pay since obviously these folks haven't been here very long, so we won't be paying longevity pay for those folks. And there's additional savings, as you've probably heard before, from the grant funding for one of our officers. That's paid through the grant that we share with Airway Heights on the Behavioral Health Unit. And that, that saves us, you know, six figures a year between there. Because it pays for not only their wages, but their benefits as well, which is a huge thing for us. So that's kind of the long and short, short of the budget impact. You know, realizing also that overtime, there's a question on overtime. I can tell you that Acting Chief Oaks and I have had a long discussion about overtime and, and he is very focused on, on trying to minimize overtime. And I feel good about the fact that we, I think we can stabilize our staff and we can reduce that overtime. Because we're not going to have to fill in all these shifts, you know, with these vacant positions and things. So once we get, you know, our two new officers that are laterals through their FTO car, they then count towards minimum staffing. So I feel about, I feel really good about where we are in terms of our police department staffing at this point. We have a lot of good and committed folks as officers, as sergeants, as a lieutenant and currently as our acting chief. Very focused on, on their mission to keep the city, city safe. So I will be happy to answer any questions you may have, but I would encourage you to pass this resolution so Americans sign the contract.
Thanks, Mark. Questions, comments for Mark? Thanks for all the work you and the Guild did.
Yeah, and I, I, I should have said this at the start, but I really do appreciate the Guild leadership and their negotiating team coming in and. Kind of laying all the cards on the table and, and as we discussed, kind of the, I'll just say the environment that we're in right now, the escalating costs of, of policing and public safety in general. You know, we certainly, I think, got to a mutually beneficial place where, you know, the, the city. You know, obviously with the increasing costs has to be concerned about the future years. But maintaining our staffing was absolutely critical to, you know, to the Guild. Because honestly, they're getting, they're getting worn out, having to work overtime and more we can do to stabilize and have a full complement of officers. The less impact it has on them and their families. So that's another thing to feel good about.
If there are no questions, then I would move to approve resolution F three fifty four.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second to approve resolution F three fifty four, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven Police Guild Contract. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay. Thank you, Mark. Resolution F three fifty four passes. Congratulations to the Guild. Cindy, you got a couple of them. Resolution F three fifty five is the lodging tax dispersment for Mayfest and the West Plains Little League.
Absolutely. We've been very busy as a lodging tax committee this spring already. The first one we're looking at are two that you will, Mayfest, we see every single year. It's a great program. It's a great event for the city of Cheney. They have put in a request for thirty two thousand, sixty seven dollars. With Mayfest, we fund majority of that upfront. They just don't have the capacity in the Mayfest, their Mayfest account to fund it and then get reimbursement. And so I'm requesting to give them thirty thousand upfront. They keep their receipts, they turn those in. And anything they don't spend, then they turn back into us as well. They're also really good about turning in their participation reports as required. And that's them. West Plains Little League is a new event this year. It's a tournament they'd like to have. They're only asking for two thousand dollars. When the committee looks at that, they look at to make sure that all the things they're requesting are operational. Now you have to be, you know, it has to be an operational to be an event, the operational expenses, nothing capital. So the committee did vote to approve Mayfest for the thirty two thousand, sixty seven dollars and West Plains Little League for two thousand dollars. I'm asking for your approval of resolution F three fifty five, please.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions or comments for Cindy?
Yeah, I'll go ones. I noticed on it that, that West Plains Little League, their project budget was five thousand. The amount they requested was two, and then there's a matching fund. Do you know who's matching that?
This kind of brings up the whole application that it's a little confusing.
Yeah.
And so they're only asking for two, so they're just saying that they're matching the rest of that. On the new application, it's a little clearer that we're working on so that it's clear to see what their revenue sources are, what their funding is. And then what they're requesting exactly and what that match is. So we're just expanding on that in the new application process. We're just not quite done with it yet.
Right. Okay. I don't know the procedure for this, but West Plains Little League, pun intended, has been knocking it out of the park. And they, the last thing they did last year, they had about a thousand people in our city. All of our hotels were full, all our restaurants were full, and a lot of money got spent in our city that weekend. I would motion to give them five grand. For their entire budget. I don't know if you can do that because they didn't request it, but.
It would have to probably go back to the committee, right?
I would think it would probably would need to go back to the committee and they probably want to consider that. We want to look at some legalities of that. You know, the way the lodging tax is pretty clear on how it works and that they come, they request, the committee reviews what's submitted. And then they go through and tweak if they feel like it needs tweaked. And then they make the recommendation to full council, you as a council. Have a number of days in which you can consider these applications. They certainly don't have to be approved on the first day I bring them. That's one of the other things we're doing with the application is trying to move it to, you need to have it in ninety days before your event. And so the committee can meet and look at it. It gives you guys a chance to look at it. If you want to give them more, I mean. Honestly, they didn't ask for more and it is not the committee's, you know, it's not the fund's purpose is to. I guess, increase the bank account, you know, of the, of the nonprofit that is, is submitting the, the application. So they, their funds, they probably already have those funds in place is probably what they're doing. I think the committee realizes what a great event that it is when they all come and they bring their kid, you know, all their families and all their aunts and uncles and grandparents. And everybody stays here. It is, it's great for the city and they're very, they were very enthusiastic to support it, the two thousand. I can certainly defer to Danielle. She's the, the liaison on our, on our committee.
I would also say there are some things that lodging tax is not approved to cover. Like prizes and things like that.
We stay away from some of it as well. That's one of the things they go through and looking. It's like, okay, yeah, we can do your operational cost here, but giving a prize away is not really an operational cost. So we push those out and we push out other things that they may want and say, okay, we could cover this piece of that for you. That keeps us in line without the state law and what you're allowed to pay for with your lodging taxes. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, great.
Any other questions for Cindy?
If there are no further questions, your honor, I would move for passage of resolution F three fifty five.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second to pass resolution F three fifty five, the lodging tax dispersment for Mayfest and West Plains Little League. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Cindy. Resolution F three fifty-five passes. And resolution F three fifty-six is the lodging tax dispersment for Spokane America's Youth Hockey Association.
So this one is coming back to you. So this event has already taken place. Um, and they submitted an application like five days before the event. So I returned it and said, gosh, this wasn't enough time for us to get a committee together and just go to council. I'm very sorry. It sounds like a great event. Good luck. Please come back again. Um, and recently we heard back from them and they asked for some re, well, actually we heard back from a community member. And they asked us to reconsider that. So I pushed, I asked the mayor and Mark, and the mayor asked to have that, the committee review that as well. So this, this hockey tournament came to town. It also filled all of the uh hotels. It had all record events. The reason it was so late is their person that was in charge of doing this was in a very serious automobile accident. And I was unable to to submit it in. Earlier in the month. Um, you know, there was some concern uh on the committee because lodging tax needs to be requested and approved in advance. Um, and to think that we can come back after, that's going to open floodgates, you know, everywhere. So there was a, there was concern and and much discussion about that. They recommended, and certainly councilperson LaBarre can can speak to this as well, that we um go ahead and recommend this for funding. As a one-time exception to this pre-authorization rule based on these really big extenuating circumstances. Um, you know, you you look at hockey as a whole, so this is the second hockey event in the first quarter of this of this year. And both have been wildly successful. They've had all these people in town, very crowded. Um, it's a great opportunity for these people to come and see Eastern as a university. It's a great opportunity for them to see our town and, you know. Stay in our hotels, eat at our restaurant, shop at our stores. Um, they they realized all of that. And although there was some some concern about the timing, their recommendation was to approve this as well.
Over the last couple of years, um, when we've had requests, um, there have been situations where. People, organizations who have been multiple-year requesters have um waited literally till the week before. To bring it in and so that there's really not any time to evaluate it or analyze it or whatever, but they were. It was an ongoing problem. And so based on that, uh, as part of the finance committee discussions, uh Cindy uh worked up a policy that met. That was consistent with some other policies in the region uh for lodging tax and um, and while it has. Set timelines and so on, though I think those can be adjusted for unusual circumstances on a very, you know, on a limited basis. Again, if it's somebody who keeps doing it, that's a problem. But um, in this case, I I think, you know, little hockey players are pretty hungry people. And they probably bought a lot of pizza here or whatever in in Cheney, so you know, I would, I would hope we could um. You know. Help them out this time.
I'd just like to add, this is a unique asset to Cheney.
Yes.
You know, we don't, we don't own this, right? Certainly, Eastern does, but this is something that's unique that we could, we should capitalize on. We could get, we could become like Cindy said, I think earlier in finance, we could become the hockey capital of Washington State, it'd be awesome.
Yes.
Um, so funding this event, I think, would would send a message out that we we're welcoming, you know, all this hockey, college hockey, whatever. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for hotels and restaurants and grocery stores and everything, all retail spots in Cheney, so.
And just to add to that, just um, we, on Lodging Tax Committee, we did discuss like, you know. Retro actively doing this and setting a precedent, so it would be like extenuating circumstances. But Debbie did send me, they um booked out three hundred and thirty-nine room nights at the Holiday Inn that weekend. And I spoke to multiple business owners and they did see record numbers. Um, so I agree. I think like it would be great to do this in good faith. Um, and hopefully they'll be back.
Right. So given that, if any, if there are no further questions or soapbox speeches. I would move for passage of resolution F three fifty-six.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to second to pass resolution F three fifty-six, lodging tax dispersment for Spokane America's Youth Hockey Association. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, thank you. Resolution F three fifty-six passes. Steve, resolution F three fifty-seven.
Evening there.
Comcast poll attachment agreement.
Pretty simple one tonight. If you recall in January, franchise agreement to Comcast to provide services. To the residents of the town and we need a poll attachment agreement because they'll hang their equipment on our poles and we collect the fee for that. So after a lot of negotiation and several edits, thank you to Mike Kapan, did outstanding job as counsel for this. It was really great working with them and and also with Mark. Um, it's pretty simplistic. We we covered all the ground, similar to what we have uh all the other providers here in town. Uh, covering our liability and all the legal aspects we think keeps the city safe. So is there any questions?
Thanks, Steve. Any questions? Polls are getting kind of full, aren't they?
Pardon?
Our polls are going to start getting pretty full here pretty soon.
We're running out of road. We need bigger polls.
That's good. That's.
We can go out.
More services to the citizens.
Yes.
Your honor, we discussed this at Public Works and I'd make a motion to approve F three fifty-seven.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion to second to approve resolution F three fifty-seven, the Comcast poll attachment agreement. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Osnay, thank you, Steve. Resolution F three fifty-seven passes.
Uh, can I make one comment now that we're done? One of the things we talked about too that I was not aware of is in the agreement, if they decide to leave. They will pay us to take all the wire off the pole. So, or they will pay somebody to do it. So that was good agreement as well, that we're not stuck with a bunch of wire on our pole if they choose to not stay in Cheney.
Okay, a couple ordinances. First one, ordinance Y eighty-five, and we're look only looking for first read on this, Mary Street uh vacation application, Todd.
That's correct. And on uh, obviously, March eleventh, we did have a public hearing on that. And uh, council's wishes was to bring back a uh vacation ordinance. So before you tonight is a vacation ordinance. Uh, as we did the presentation, we wanted to set this vacation uh with certain conditions before the ordinance was uh enacted. So I'd like to kind of really briefly uh run through uh the ordinance in section two. Uh, these conditions will need to be met. Uh, the petitioner, which is Randall Gillingham, will have to relocate the existing access to the property. There is an existing road down there. Uh, in order to do so, he will submit a civil plan uh showing where those accesses were going. And part of his development will need to be approved before we even go to that next step. So these are are certain checkpoints in there. Um, and then wherever that access is approved to those properties, uh then uh Mr. Gillingham will be responsible for constructing that access as well. Um, and then also in in section D, during the dependency, uh we did, we did recommend the sunset in five years if if there was no action on that. But just make it clear that this is a public right of way. He can't get in there and start moving things around without uh without the city's position. And then also an E, that all fees associated with the cost uh will have to go to the clerk to be paid. And then the ordinance would be enacted and then the title would be uh uh granted to Gillingham. Uh, in in section uh three, there is a little bit of homework there because I said I'd bring back kind of a cost. Uh, what I'm recommending uh is about three dollars per square foot. And 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 my basis for it is in uh twenty, towards the end of twenty twenty-one. In December, the property was purchased for two seventy-six a square foot. And all I did was put a three percent uh addition onto uh each year to kind of round it up to three dollars a square foot. The actual square footage is is in the description. It is a very uh quirky lot. It's not too squared. So uh we'll get help from the surveyors. Uh, we reached out to the surveyor. They said, yeah, that that legal description is good. Made a few recommendations on on recording that uh attachment. But the next question is, is we need that actual square footage of that pot. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd? And again, we're only, you're only asking for first reads so we can get comments.
Yep, and and I did sit down with both Jack and Mitchell uh this morning. We went over it. They understand kind of the the game or the rules that we are applying this ordinance to.
You said you sat down with Mr. Gillingham? Okay.
Are there any questions from before?
Questions?
Yeah, we've talked about this. Um, so given that, I would move for the first reading of ordinance Y eighty-five entitled in summary form only. And that subsequent readings be brought to us at subsequent meetings.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in a second for the first reading of ordinance Y eighty-five, Mary Street Vacation Application, entitled in summary form only. And that future readings be. Subsequent readings be brought back to City Council in subsequent council meetings. Sorry, I couldn't get that out. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Osnay, thank you, Todd. The first reading of ordinance Y eighty-five passes. Oh, go ahead, Shelly, sorry.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Mary Street and a portion of the right-of-way adjacent to Andrus Road. And First Street adjacent to lots one and two, block one seventeen of the addition to Calloways in the city of Cheney, Washington.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Ordinance Y eighty-six, this is the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance needed because of the Guild contract being passed, Mark.
Yes, since you kindly passed the Police Guild contract, we just made a simple update to the salary ordinance to reflect the changes in the contract. So I would ask for all three readings and passage so we can get these folks paid.
Thank you, Mark.
Your honor, given that, I would move for the first reading of ordinance Y eighty-six, entitled in summary form only. And that the first be considered the second and the second be considered the third and placed before us for final passage.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in a second for the first reading of ordinance Y eighty-six, twenty twenty-five salary ordinance in title and summary form only. And that the first reading be considered the second, second be considered the third, and it be placed before you all for final passage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, Shelly.
An ordinance fixing the salaries and compensation for appointive officers and employees of the city of Cheney. Fixing the effective date thereof, repealing ordinance Y eighty-three and providing the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Shelly. Councilmember Overhauser.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartels.
Aye.
Councilmember Belloc.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Nazaro.
Aye.
Councilmember LaBarre.
Aye.
And Councilmember Postuma.
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance Y eighty-six passes. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we don't have any other business. Do you have any staff reports?
Just a couple quick ones. Um, number one, the state budget forecast is not getting any better. Um, unfortunately, um, there's. Going to be some tough discussions uh that are had in the legislature. Um, the most um troublesome, I guess, for me is just the sweep of the Public Works Assistance Account. Um, they're talking, uh, the the House and Senate differ a little bit on the amount they plan to sweep. Uh, I think, I think the Senate's might go up to like two hundred and sixty-six million. A house is much less than that, but still, that's a, that's a vital fund uh for cities and and. Um, without that resource, um, our infrastructure um will certainly not be addressed in in ways it should be. So we're keeping an eye on it. Uh, Deborah uh sends out um information as it becomes available to her, so we're tracking everything very close. Uh, but we'll keep you informed on how the session continues to go. There are still some bills out there that we're keeping an eye on in terms of housing and zoning and parking and. Uh, public safety funding and things, so um, much more to come on that. And then I'm gonna have Todd come up and talk about flushing and uh some social media posts about lead in the water.
Thanks, Mark.
I heard through the grapevine that social media kind of blew up that we have lead in in the water and we kind of responded on our website. We we don't have lead in our water. Let's just make that that clear. I think a lot of people are are uh kind of misreading what we're trying to accomplish here is that uh this is a lead line survey. Um, so when we take a look at our mains, uh, we we have pretty much mitigated all of the the the, any potential lead in that line. And we don't have any lead lines in there, but there is, there was some uh potential lead lines uh connections, which we mitigated all the way through. But now we have to go and take a look at our meter boxes and basically into the house. So anything uh nineteen eighty-six and older has a potential to have a either a a lead line, which is highly unusual. Or some type of fixture that could contain lead. So uh, our water department is out opening our meter boxes and they can actually look down at the yoke. They can kind of see the customer side of the line and our side of the line. And we need to just get that inventory done. We did have a person uh do a home test on on a lead. Uh, they they swiped it and within minutes they saw a color, so they just posted that lead was in the water. That wasn't the case. So what we have done is we proactively went out around that area, took three samples, sent it in, and we'll have that result within seven to ten days. But we test for all of those uh constituents in there. We've never had a a lead level to that end. So that's what we're trying to accomplish with this survey. So anybody have any questions, please reach out to the Public Works. We happily answer those questions.
Thanks, Todd.
Flushing program. Uh, we're we're working through uh some some staff changes. We've we've had a, we had one person uh leave the water department. So we're quickly trying to hire that position and hire a new position as well. We're working still on uh uh section one. We're down uh close to uh Second Street. Uh, then I got the report that they want to kind of wind up around. Uh, basically under section, the seventh area, just to try to tie everything up because it would be just kind of looped into that high zone area. And then they're going to work their way back down to the southwest, so uh we've we've had a bump for about a week or two. Uh, with the exception, we did have a vehicle hit a fire hydrant on Fifth and Clay, which did an immediate flush of the whole town. And uh, we spent most of the weekend trying to correct all of that. Um, but I think everything uh should be cleared up by now, so. I'd answer any questions.
Any questions for Todd?
So if the letter that we received that explained all of this to us. Nobody needs to do anything other than if they are concerned about the line between their house and the um. Connection. They need to check it from either digging, by either digging down or going through their wall or whatever to figure it out, right?
Yeah, yeah. Typically, we can, if it if it goes underground and it comes through their basement or their foundation, they can usually send somebody in there to take a, take a quick look at it. If we see something suspicious on their side, we may, we notify them, but what we do have to document, all the, all the procedures that were going, DOH requirement.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Anything else? Kudos to Dan Curly on his uh efforts with the aquatic facility. That's uh, I I did, I brought that up. I didn't know if you had any update.
Yeah, yeah, we 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 certainly uh uh lit the fire uh under uh uh what was going on. Uh, uh, kudos to uh Walker for stepping up, uh, coming through that they were, we were kind of uh short in in kind of getting this project done. Uh, they have brought a new project manager in. Uh, he is well-versed at uh at aquatics. He 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 actually uh built or helped build the twelve uh facilities in the city of Spokane. Um, and he is well-known with our subcontractor for the pool. Uh, since then, he has convinced the the subcontractor to bring in additional ten men crew, ten person crew up to focus on the pool. In addition to another crew, uh crew to focus on the pool house. So that is going gung ho. The block is going up. Hopefully the block will be done here in the next week or so. Uh, in addition, they're not waiting on the block. They are doing the roof. They're getting dried in over the mechanical room and they're just kind of blowing through. Right now, we do have wet weather. Uh, we do have some pumping all winter in in that area. Uh, but their main focus is to start prepping for the pool deck uh within the next two or three weeks. So whether, hopefully the weather holds out, uh, we we're trying to work a game plan uh to deal with the subsurface. Uh, we know saturated soil soil is not the most conducive, and if it continues to be saturated, we may have to make some provisions to put in some suitable in order to save time. So uh, brush your fingers, maybe this weather will continue into the seventies and eighties over the next two weeks, but it doesn't look like it.
It's been exciting seeing that building go up so quickly.
It's going up quickly. You see the tents over the pools. Uh, what they're doing right now is they're actually doing the PVC welds on the pool. And so they need a a certain temperature and a dry condition, so we're just moving that tent over every the pool. So actually, people are working.
They were working on the weekend.
That, one, one thing, uh, yeah, I don't know too sure uh uh of this new project manager, but he he said that uh if they need to make up a schedule, he's telling the guys, we're considering. So that's, that's, that's getting them going. So very exciting. It is going up quickly and we're seeing a lot of, a lot of things when everything goes vertical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, for mine, the West Plains Chamber, uh, annual meetings tomorrow, uh, morning at the Pavilion at the Northern Quest. And I, every year, that's my opportunity to get in front of a bunch of people and brag about how great Cheney is. So I'm looking forward to that tomorrow morning. Uh, EW Giving Joy Day is April third. If you haven't heard about that, that's it's a pretty cool event and they make a lot of money. It's just amazing how much, how many people donate. Uh, council reports, Teresa.
I have something, but I guess I don't. I'll send it to you on signal.
Signal it. I have nothing to say. Okay, Jackie?
I just wanted to say, um, we've got all our sports, spring sports underway, and as the weather's getting nicer, make sure you're looking twice as you're driving through town of Washington for pedestrians.
Yeah, good call, for sure.
Yeah, uh, the Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee that I sit on, uh, the county, we just got through, uh, allocating all of the grant money to the different projects that came in. Uh, how that pertains to us, the Cheney Outreach Center got full funding for what they were asking for, so.
Uh, just a question for Todd. Um, Cheney Clean Sweep. I know that was kind of Brett's thing, so just kind of wondering if we're gonna do that.
It is actually on, I believe, April twelfth.
Yeah.
Uh, Saturday, Cheney Clean Sweep. So here again, we'll be, uh, kind of out in the street, hopefully getting all of our volunteers to walk the streets and, and clean it up. So hope for good weather and
Yeah, that's a fun event.
Yeah, it is a fun event. So great opportunity for us to get out there in the sun, hopefully.
Well, that concludes all our action items, so I'm going to change it up and say, I'm going to conclude this meeting. I don't think we have to vote to conclude.
Let's go.
I guess not. Concluding this meeting. Thank you.